I stopped by the city councilman Sharif's office yesterday and his staff very kindly emailed me this photograph to use, so we're going to be waiting for his call and he, oh, this should be him. Hello?
Hello.
Hi, Mr. Sharif.
Yes, how are you doing?
Thank you so much for calling in. How are you?
I'm doing great.
That's good. How are you listening to us on your computer? Do you see yourself up there?
No, I don't. So what's the website? Well, I don't want to listen. I don't want to look at myself.
Okay. Thank you so much for being on our show today.
That's great. Thank you for having me.
So listen, I talked to Eric Martindale.
Right.
And there's two, well, first, he wanted to express his support and he told us that you ran for city council as an independent.
Yes.
And that's extremely difficult. Can you tell us a little bit about that? Because it's very admirable that you took that very difficult road and won.
Well, it's, you know, I've always had a view that what's wrong with politics, not only in Newark, but in a lot of big cities, it really is that it's controlled by powerful interests, you know, big, powerful political bosses and then, you know, big developers, law firms, a lot of people who invest a lot of their resources in the system to control it, to produce the outcomes that they want. And, you know, I, prior to running for election, I was the director of operations for the Urban League of Essex County for eight years and all of the great things that we did, working with people in the neighborhood, you know, they were referred to our organization as the organization of Last Resort. We provided housing assistance, housing counseling, preschool, free preschool for moms who couldn't afford it, but then I recognized after a while that in order really to change the trajectory of entire neighborhoods, you really did have to be in City Hall where all those resources flowed and where people make neighborhood development plans. So I made a decision to run for the municipal council against the advice of a lot of people. A lot of people said I didn't have a chance at all, but what they didn't know and what I knew was that there were literally thousands of great residents in the Central Ward who were really hungering for change, for something different and that if I, I spent every day, somebody said, "If you want to win, you've got to take a leave of absence nine months before the campaign and knock on as many doors as you could." And so I thought that was the wisest political advice to get and that's exactly what I did and knocked on thousands of doors, really trying to articulate a vision for really changing the status quo. And the first election, which was in May, because none of the seven candidates got more than 50% plus one of the total votes cast, there was a runoff and in the runoff, it was myself and the mayor's candidate Charlie Bell who went head to head and we were in, you know, huge campaign debt. We maxed out credit cards, all that kind of stuff and they thought they had us dead to rights, but again, as I said, people wanted something different and I won in the next election in June, I won by a whopping 11 votes. That was the smallest margin ever in a municipal council race.
Wow. Listen, I got to tell you something. When I talked to freeholder William O'Day, he won one of his elections, I forget which one it was, but it was early, I think, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, but one of his elections, he won by one vote.
Oh, my goodness. So I feel like I won by a landslide compared to him.
And I agree with you and you hear it over and over again in Hudson County in Jersey. They're just sick and tired of the crime and corruption. It's like water on the parched earth.
Exactly.
So what Eric Martindale and the other community leaders and the president of the tenants association in Hackensack, we're all getting together and what we wanted people to know was, and you can, I think we're stealing this right out of Governor Christie's website and it doesn't matter how you feel about him, but it's not about party affiliation, it's not about labels, it's about trying to do the right thing.
Exactly.
So, and when I talked to Eric Martindale today, he said you would be very humble and not do this, so that I would. I'm going to be a little pushy. At my, in my TV studio, which is pretty unique among public access studios, you are allowed to ask for support, you are allowed to ask for donations and what you're really interested in, that people should donate their time.
Right.
It would be nice when you run again if they donate a little money, but if you believe in what Mr. Sharif is doing, please volunteer your time. Call him up and say, you know, everybody's got at least an hour or two or three a month.
Right.
And I'm sure you would be willing to take those, you know, have a sign up sheet and say, you know, what do we need to work on and would you be willing to donate your time and your money? And if you believe in what Mr. Sharif is doing, please vote for him because we need him. So one of the things that Eric Martindale asked me to ask you about is what brought us together was that you're introducing a new ordinance to stop the tax surcharge.
Yes.
So how's that going? Can you give us an update?
Well, it's great. I mean, I got to work with a great group of residents at the Pavilion Apartments and it is especially great to go back to a community that you've asked for support and to be able to assist them on something that's important to them. And what had happened in the case of the Pavilion residents, they have a long laundry list of violations, things that the managers and the property management didn't do, but the ordinance that is on the books at City Hall says that when we increase the property tax, that owners almost automatically are allowed to put in application for a surcharge increase and it doesn't matter what condition they keep the building in and how they treat the residents. And so the owners of the Pavilion had put in an application and we found out about it. We did some research and prior to the meeting of the rent control board, we found out that one year, we actually reduced the property tax and in the case of reduction, the owners are required to pass on that savings to the tenants and they could not tell us then whether or not they did it. So the matter was suspended until the rent control board conducted investigation and then they found out that the reduction was not passed on to the tenants and so they had to give them a reduction. Now, it was, you know, a few dollars here, a few dollars there, but the important thing is that the owners decided not to put in the application, but it gave us an opportunity to look at that ordinance and to say it shouldn't be automatic so that when the request comes into the rent control board, they are required to look at a report from our code enforcement division and if there are a number of violations and we're working through the specifics of it, the rent increase, surcharge increases will be denied until all of the violations are cleared up. And, you know, that's the ordinance change as it exists, but we're actually trying to find municipalities where that part of the language is not in there, so they're not allowed to apply for an increase even if the property taxes goes. So the item has been on the agenda for a couple of meetings and I've asked that it be deferred so that we can get an ordinance that works the best for residents.
Let me ask you something about code enforcement, because one of the things that, I go to these tenant association meetings in Newark and they, they kind of like the idea that with code enforcement, you could actually raise revenue, but it seems like, you know, the powers that be don't want to fine landlords when they violate the law. So what's the reluctance in, you know, all the tenants are saying, "But listen, you could raise money and that money could be used to do a lot of good for tenants." So what's the reluctance in not penalizing landlords?
Well, I have to be honest and I say this, I've got many criticisms on the policy level with this administration, but I have excellent work and relationships with the rank and file that work in the different departments and as it relates to the code enforcement office, I've got excellent relationship with them. So I must be honest, I haven't encountered a situation where we contacted code enforcement and there were anything less than, very like vigorous in terms of going over to a place and if necessary, slapping a summons or a fine on them. So I, you know, I just want to, you know, be honest and balanced with, you know, with my criticisms of different departments within the administration. So I haven't, and I've just been here for two years and maybe that is the case in other situations and, you know, but I haven't found that to be honest.
So they are pretty good about collecting, you know, fine.
Yeah, now the problem is we're going into a budget, a new budget year and last year we made cuts in the budget and this year they're proposing cuts and we don't understand the logic of cutting positions like code enforcement that can slap a big fine. So if there are fewer code enforcement people and inspectors who ride around construction sites to make sure that contractors have permits and contractors know this very well, then there's a higher likelihood that they will go and do illegal development knowing that we don't have enough code enforcement people and inspectors to go monitor the site. And so that is a concern. So in this budget year, I'm going to look at all of those positions that have anything to do with generating much needed revenue because that's, you know, that's counterproductive, that we're going to make cuts in areas where the people who are being cut are responsible for generating revenue. And that is a concern that we had last year, that's another concern that we have this year.
And you've just opened the door to a really good question that Mr. Martindale and the other tenant advocates talked me through today, which is they're supporting the idea of having a tenant advocate who's not neutral, but really is, you know, has institutional history and would support tenants, but if you're going into a budget where you have to cut and you're trying to protect code enforcement officers, how can you afford a tenant advocate? I mean, it's nice that the tenants associations came up with these creative ideas, but how are you going to pay for them?
Well, look, we, there is a lot of excess in this budget and our frustration as a municipal council is that the administration takes such a long period of time before they give us our spending plan so that we can initiate the budget hearing process. And once that, once we vote to accept the budget, the budget becomes the responsibility of the municipal council, but the longer it takes for the administration to give us their spending plan for us to initiate the budget process, the more difficult it is for us to look around to see where we can move money, cut money from different departments where we think the money isn't needed. The biggest target in a lot of departments is their overtime. And so if we have the budget with enough time to really do a thorough analysis, it is very possible for us to spot areas where we literally could pencil out, strike through areas and redirect that to areas where we thought would be better spent. And so that's, this is my third budget and to be honest, that's not what happens. Theoretically, it could happen, but there are a lot of things that have to line up and we'd have to have a lot more cooperation on the municipal council, to be honest, in order for that to happen. But theoretically, it could happen. You know, the first vote that we take in January is a vote to have a temporary appropriation which represents the first three months of the year. And technically, we're supposed to adopt the budget by March the 31st, but because a big piece of that revenue comes from the state and the state doesn't pass their budget until the end of June, realistically, we're voting after that three months is over, over for monthly appropriations until we can pass the budget. But, so I'm looking forward to, you know, I went to a tenant meeting, I'm sorry, not a tenant meeting, a meeting from a preschool where there's no crossing guard at an intersection and crossing guards get funded out of the police budget. And so I'd be interested to look at the police budget and to look at overtime in particular and to have them justify the amount of money that they're going to spend for overtime and if they can't justify the full amount, my recommendation would be to use some of that money to fund crossing guards. And we can do similar things with respect to other important areas that we think need to be funded.
So do you think it's realistic that you might actually get a tenant, I mean, do you think that's a good suggestion?
Well, I think it's outstanding, a fantastic suggestion and Eric knows this. He came to a meeting with the Pavilion folks. I, you know, I, this administration goes on and on about having a transparent government, but transparency doesn't mean anything unless people really can engage and understand what goes on. Part of the frustration that residents of Newark has is, and it's well founded, is that they don't have a clue really what we do every day. And so when I came to the municipal council, only our, only our meetings, the actual meeting was televised. I said, "That is ridiculous because the important dress rehearsal that takes place the day before, that's our pre-council meeting." So if a viewer never saw the pre-council meeting where we get into the items in very, very specific detail, then they watch the regular meeting and we are referring to groups of agenda items by their number. So we're going to vote on agenda items 7Q5 through 7QZ. The viewer, they could be a rocket scientist and wouldn't have a clue. So I lobbied my council colleagues and they supported me ultimately to have not only the regular council meeting televised, but the pre-council meetings and every special meeting that we have so that for somebody who really wanted to understand government, they could watch the pre-council and the special meeting so they have a fuller understanding of what we do.
That's excellent. Now, thank you so much because, you know, it's funny, I was at a freeholders' meeting yesterday and they were doing that same thing. They were going, you know, "We're all going to vote on these chunks" and people are looking at each other going, "What are they talking about?" So that's a great idea. Maybe we'll steal it and ask the freeholders if they could do the same thing, except I think the freeholders do like, they call it a caucus meeting.
Oh, okay.
A pre-council meeting. So if you go to the caucuses, maybe you can understand a little bit better. Let me ask you something. What kinds of things can the residents of Newark do to help you? I mean, they're always going and making demands of you.
Exactly.
What kinds of things, and you can speak for yourself individually and then you could give your views on what you think the city, what kinds of things can the residents of, I mean, it's easy to go and yell at somebody and then go home, but it's a lot harder to do the work.
Right.
What kinds of things, I mean, give us like three things that the residents of Newark could do to help you do your job better.
Right. They can volunteer their time and you mentioned a few minutes ago that every single person, and I truly believe this, has a special skill, talent or gift, that if they were asked to volunteer that gift in a very specific way, a lot of the things that people come to council meetings and request, a lot of those things can be supported or taken care of or addressed by people who volunteer. And I do this. You know, my training is in community development. I was a director of operations, as I said, for the Urban League of Essex County. So when I came to office, I said, "Let me utilize our most underutilized resource," and that's our people. So this is our second year of an outstanding initiative with Science Park High School. We said to the principal, "Can you open this school on a Saturday so that we can have, offer free classes to residents?" And the principal said, "Councilman, I think that's a tremendous idea." And then I went to recruit of people to volunteer to teach any number of classes and they said, "Oh, councilman, nobody's ever asked us, this is great." And on Saturday from 11 o'clock in the morning until 2 o'clock in the afternoon, we have classes ranging from yoga, kickboxing and aerobics. I teach intro to computers. We have financial management. We have volunteered certified swimming instruction for people who want to learn how to swim. We have a social justice art class and all these classes are free. The facility is free of charge and we're able to offer them to residents. If you drive through the Central Ward, on every single street, it seems that we have these vacant lots and a lot of these lots are used for illegal dumping grounds. And so I went to speak to a charter school and I said to the students, "I don't want to give you a speech, I want to challenge you to, challenge me to be involved in a civic project." And to their great credit with their, with their teachers, they said, "We want to adopt the lot, councilman, and we want to transfer it into a garden and a little pocket park." And we drove around one Saturday for about three hours and identified a lot in the northern part of the Central Ward and decided to adopt it. And we got a big developer who's doing a couple of developments in the Central Ward to use his earth moving equipment to level it out and, you know, every other Saturday, a group of people descend on that lot and they're making planning beds and, you know, a friend of mine who's a landscape architect did the design and this is going to be the model that we're going to replicate as we go around to different places in the Central Ward with our vacant lot. And that lot, just think about it, it really is a number of things. It's a place where people can come and feel a sense of accomplishment. It's a place where people can socialize and so it's a community organizing tool and it is something that is not too hard for people to complete. So it gives them a sense of accomplishment so they can bind together to deal with some of the more complex and more difficult problems. What people need to understand, when I grew up in Newark, there's a lot more money in the budget to fund a lot of the things that were important to people, like senior services, recreation. That money is not there anymore. Doesn't mean that those priorities are any less important and what we have to do as a community or a village is we have to be prepared to make a personal sacrifice so that we can continue to provide those important things to residents who have come to rely on them over the years.
What kinds of things do you think could bring more revenue to Newark? Do you think?
Oh, for sure. And I ran on this. The, one of the most valuable assets that the city owns is the, our air terminal and our marine terminal at the port. And unlike Elizabeth who sold their, most of their land to the Port Authority, we just leased it. We entered a lease with them in 1947 and over the next five to 10 years, the projection is that there are thousands and thousands of jobs that will be created on the port. This administration has not been seriously engaged with the Port Authority to figure out how to maximize that asset and to show the Port Authority how to, how to create more jobs and revenue. Our contract with the port says that we get 10% of their net revenue. So the more that we make for the port at 10%, the more recurring revenue that we get. Every single year, absent a viable recurring revenue source, the only option available to us for recurring revenue is to increase the property taxes and that is not sustainable. People start to move out of Newark in droves and the other only option, because we're required by law to balance our budget, is to rely on state aid and in exchange for that state aid, we are forced to make draconian cuts. And so the Port Authority really, and I asked when I came on the council, I asked our council president if he would create a council committee on the port and make me the chairman and he did that. So a few months ago, we started to have expert testimony on the port and I identified a consulting firm, financial advisor, that is an expert on the port and we're going to bring them on board. I've been trying to fight to bring them on board for about a year. Finally, their contract went through the administration and got the administration approval, but their, one of their main responsibilities will be to, because they have other clients, port authorities throughout the country, is to take all the expert testimony and their expertise and to offer up a strategic plan that we could present to the Port Authority in order to find additional revenue. But that for me is the biggest source of recurring revenue.
So that would, that's excellent. You know, it's a nice segue too into what I was going to ask for my next question because and I'm going to, I'm going to click on Newark Tenants United website and we're looking right now at the tenants' agenda for Newark. You've pretty much covered the tax surcharge. You've talked about complete transparency and code enforcement. I didn't think we'd get to touch on a lot of these. We were just going to touch on one or two. I'm pleased to report that, you know, item four on this agenda is you support the tenant advocate and are trying to find ways to fund it, is that correct?
Oh, definitely. Right.
So that's great. The other two items.
And that's it. Let me just, I just want to back up because.
Sure.
There's a situation where the most sacred covenant, right, between a landlord and tenant is the lease. But every landlord or property manager should allow for the existence of a strong and vibrant tenant association and they should not use unfair advantage or use technicalities through a lease to intimidate the members of the tenant association. And that's what's going on over at the Pavilion. And I've intervened to say to the management that if you don't leave this tenant association alone and stop threatening some of the members, then I will use my position as a council person and all the resources and authority and power that I have as a council person to make it extremely uncomfortable for you to operate. So the funding of a tenant advocate with the appropriate powers that we could attach to that position and their relationship to the government really can be an effective watchdog over a lot of these, a lot of these landlords who threaten eviction and other things if tenants step up and speak for their rights.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that. Thank you because we're taking the step of taking it beyond making it uncomfortable. I had a meeting with a friend of mine, Patricia Waiters, from Hoboken. We sat down with Senator Brian Stack and we're directed to contact the state attorney general directly. In my case, it wasn't just about using technicalities in the lease. I thought this was unique to me. I was horrified to discover that in Newark, for example, there's at least one other woman who was accused of making terroristic threats. I was accused of making terroristic threats as a technicality because in New Jersey law, if you're accused of making, if you're guilty of making terroristic threats, your landlord can evict you in three days. Now, I am not a terrorist, nor was this very nice woman that I met in Newark. So to have landlords and their attorneys, and I'm going to use the word evil, accuse your tenants of being a terrorist when they're not, just so you can illegally evict them is criminal.
Exactly.
So we're, thank you very much. And the other thing that you brought up that was really good, so we were actually going to the state attorney general and just so you know that you're not alone in trying to help us, Senator Brian Stack is also supportive and I'll be showing some of the video that we took with him. I'm, me and Patricia Waiters were directed to write a request to the state attorney general and carbon copy it to Brian Stack. Can we carbon copy it to you too?
Yes, I would appreciate that very much.
And he also committed to making a support phone call to say, "Yes, please have the state attorney general sit down with you guys. The crimes in your case are very serious." So you don't have to commit to that, but would you also make a support call that said, "Yes, you should sit down and talk to these people"?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So what you brought up too is, you know, before my landlord was influenced by, I don't know, you know, what drove him to this point, but it's really sad because if you have a good relationship with your landlord, one of the things that we used to do is look out for the apartment building a little bit and, you know, we would do minor repairs and we would look out for the place a little bit. So when your relationship deteriorates to the point where your landlord is using these technicalities and, you know, accusing you of crimes, that's, tenants should be protected from that. So thank you. We appreciate that. The other thing they wanted me to ask about was the lease validation court process and this is one of the reasons why we're going to the state attorney general. The tenants believe that if there are illegal clauses drafted into their leases, that, you know, judges are these benevolent figures that will do the right thing and unfortunately, we're demonstrating that that's not true and sometimes the judges are equally corrupt. So one of the, so we'll be talking to the state attorney general about that and then one of the things, I'm rushing this a little bit because it's 6:45 and we've got about 18 minutes and I wanted to ask you about, me and Eric Martindale and the president of one of the tenants' associations in Hackensack are getting together and we're writing a new state law that would allow tenants to recover attorney's fees. In New York, for example, it's implied that if your lease says that if you're, you know, sometimes there are disputes and you have to go to court, if your landlord wins against a tenant, he can ask to recover his attorney's fees because attorney's fees should never be a barrier to justice. And in New York, if you're a tenant and you win against your landlord, you can request your attorney's fees be paid by your landlord. It's the principle of reciprocity and the principle of unconscionability, that a lease is basically a contract and we don't draft these inherently unfair contracts where one party... And we don't draft these inherently unfair contracts where one party gets a great benefit and another party doesn't. So we're, we're writing, um, uh, we're following New York, uh, New York's lead and we're writing a, a state law for New Jersey that says tenants should be able to recover attorney's fees too. Um, so we're looking around, we're writing the legislation. We're actually not really writing, we're sort of copying New York's law because it's been, uh, time-tested. So we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. And, um, we were wondering, do you think, and I talked to City Councilman Ramos about this, uh, last week. And I said, "You know, well, this is like basic fairness. This is like, if, if your, if your landlord wins and he can request to be made whole again by asking for attorney's fees, then if a tenant goes to court and wins, she should be able to request to be made whole again and, and get her attorney's fees paid for because attorneys, the ability to pay for attorney should never be a barrier to justice." So when we ask this to be presented on the state level, would you support that?
Of course. I mean, there, there are, um, not a lot of things since I've been here for almost two years that we have agreed to unanimously as a municipal council. But my jaw would drop to the floor if every single, uh, member of the municipal council didn't enthusiastically support, uh, this. And even our mayor, because, you know, the, the reason why a lot of people feel that they can't fight City Hall or the big powers that be is that the deck a lot of times is stacked against them. And they, um, you know, these big, um, the powers that be, they have an unfair advantage. And so anything I can do to level the playing field and to, um, and like you said, is, is basic fairness and equity, I would enthusiastically 100% support.
Thank you very much. And this also has a little side benefit that Eric Martindale doesn't like, but I kind of like. And it's, it, um, takes the burden off taxpayers and creates a new sense, uh, new source of revenue in the private sector. Because there's no reason, um, when I was fighting my, uh, my landlord-tenant case, I went to Northeast New Jersey Legal Services. They're commonly known as legal aid. So the taxpayers pay a lot of money and, um, and you have this organization, you know, this legal aid that will represent tenants. Um, if you allowed, and my case was meritorious, so if there was a law that said I could recover attorney's fees, there were attorneys in the private sector that would have taken my case. But they couldn't recover attorney's fees. So they, you know, they felt that it, even though they were morally doing the right thing, you know, you can't pay your light bill with morality.
Exactly.
So, um, uh, one of the, one of the reasons why, um, uh, Northeast New Jersey Legal Services looked at my case originally was, "Well, if we can take the burden off taxpayers for some, for meritorious, uh, cases and create a new source of revenue for private attorneys", particularly because we, we're, they were looking forward and they were realizing that their budget was going to be cut and the economy wasn't so great. So as soon as you create a new source of revenue for all the attorneys, I would think that they would love you.
So I'm going to be like agnostic on that, right? So if that is a collateral benefit that, um, you know, that, that is created as a result of what, you know, I would be most excited about, that the, um, tenant could, if they want, recover, um, you know, um, attorney's fees, then that's great, you know? But I'd, like you said, I wouldn't want to have a tenant realize if he had a great case that as the, um, law is currently written in New Jersey, that, um, it really is, you don't, you don't pursue it because you don't know if you're going to win. And then if you, um, don't think you're going to win and you're going to be saddled with all these attorney's fees, that shouldn't be a deterrent for you to pursue something that you believe is, um, right and just.
Well, actually, there were, uh, there were tenants in, I agree with you, it's a basic fairness issue and it, it, there should be reciprocity and it's the principle of unconscionability that we don't draft these inherently one-sided contracts, uh, where, where, you know, one, one party gets all the rights and all the benefits and the other party doesn't. But, um, there were attorneys in, in Jersey that were very mindful and they were, you know, bending over backwards trying to keep their fees down. But ultimately, you know, tenants were just driven out of their homes. There were three families in my building that were driven out of their homes because they couldn't afford to fight, um, uh, that, you know, that, that the attorney's fees were prohibitive to justice. But, um, uh, there are, there, there are two schools of thought about this. One, one school says this, allowing tenants to recover attorney's fees would actually have a protective effect because it would be less likely that a landlord, that...
Well, that's true.
That a landlord would use the, the, the justice system as a means of aggression.
That's true.
Because he would know that if, uh, he filed frivolous lawsuits just to harass his tenants, that he would be stuck with their attorney's fees. So he will think long and hard about paying for his attorney.
Well, that's true. That makes sense.
You know, it wouldn't, it's not the cost of doing business anymore where I throw a little money at my attorney and he harasses my tenants out of their apartments.
Exactly.
So there, it may actually have a protective effect. You can either give, uh, attorney's fees to both sides or you can have leases where neither side gets them. So the other alternative, I don't think anybody's going to go down this road, but some people feel that there might be landlords who would just remove that provision altogether.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that would be very foolish, but as long as it's a, a level playing field for both parties, um, that's, that, thank you for supporting that. That's wonderful. I, I appreciate it. I didn't think that we would get through as many items that we, uh, but I, I think the, the tenants in, uh, in, in Jersey are going to be, uh, very pleased because we actually covered quite a number of items on their agenda.
Well, you know, I, I was, it's easy for me to fight for the, um, you know, the, the little person because of the way I got here. I had to fight, I was a little person fighting against a lot of, um, big, powerful people. And so the only people, um, that own me, and I love to say it that way, are the residents that I represent. And then so there is no, um, conflict that I have when, um, situations come, um, come to my desk where it's obvious that people really, you know, control this, um, political system, um, when they're going after a little guy. And so I, I don't have any, um, conflicts and that's a great way to be able to come to City Hall every single day. And I don't have to rationalize things that are obviously, um, not in the interest of, uh, of the citizens that I represent. So it's, it's easy for me to do. And it really is just a constant, um, challenge for me to organize the community, to say that you have to protect me, you have to be my back. And, um, and, and, and me organizing, it is educating as well because it is not, I don't want to be the kind of politician who just tells people to, you know, um, support what I think is right. I've got to educate them and what conclusions they reach, they're up for, uh, for them to reach. But, um, but the, the system is broken because we're not engaged in the way that we should be engaged. And we're not engaged the way we should be engaged because we don't believe it works for us. So, you know, it's, it's a constant battle, but it's a, it's a battle, um, you know, well worth it and, you know?
Um, so one of the things that we were talking about, um, thank you so much again. Uh, I, I think it's very reassuring to hear that, you know, I ran, you ran as an independent, you're, you're not the holden to the party. What you're really, uh, concerned about is, um, moral government. You're trying to do the right things. Uh, we should support you. And what you're asking from your constituents is, um, is that they become engaged too.
Right.
And, and by their actions. Because we, we discussed a little bit the, um, uh, earlier this week, uh, Mayor Healy had won the last election. And if you look at the amount of people who could vote in Jersey City, it's close to 300,000.
Mm-hmm.
But the people who really voted was less than 20,000.
And that's exactly the way it is in Newark. And the, the reason, you know, why I have so much hope is because people who are in elected office, um, often look at the voter history and say, "Senior citizens are the ones who vote the most. So they're going to flock to the senior citizens. We know they're on fixed income and they are, um, having a tough time." So we, you know, we buy scratch cards for them and we feed them food that we know they should eat and put them on buses and send them to Atlantic City to gamble away their fixed income. And then we come back to them on Election Day and we hope that they vote for us. Um, these elected officials forget about the vast number of people who, um, live in the ward, uh, but who are not regi, who are registered but don't vote. They don't want to appeal to them because if they awaken the sleeping giant, there is a risk that these individuals might hold them accountable. I think these individuals are, um, the very ones that we need in order to, um, fix the process and to safeguard democracy. And so I look at expanding the electorate and going places where I know the status quo politicians, um, won't go. So it's a clear path for me. It really was just a matter of time. But when I meet a person and share a vision that they see themselves in, then the multiplier works because that person knows two, three, or four people that they can carry the same message to. And so that is my playbook that I make, um, I open to everybody, uh, my challengers and my foes alike. But I know they're not going to go down that road because they're trying to protect the status quo.
And you're not. So that's one of the reasons why we're, uh, we're supporting you. And again, it's not about bigger government or smaller government or party affiliation or, or labels. It's if, if you're trying to do the right thing, like Newark, uh, City Councilman Sharif, we should support him. And we should also support City Councilman Ramos. Um, I asked him last week if he would support, um, uh, our new law for tenants, uh, being able to recover attorney's fees too as a basic fairness issue. And he said, "Of course." So, um, he's, he's one person on the city council that you work with and the two of you support each other, I understand.
Right. So he's a, he's a good colleague and he is, um, dedicated. He's serious about his work. Uh, but again, I mean, this, um, you know, the issues that we're talking about, um, I would be very, very surprised if you didn't get unanimous or a majority of the council supporting those initiatives.
Thank you so much. That's wonderful. And thank you so much for your time. We're probably going to go out in about two minutes.
Okay, great.
So I just want to give you the two-minute warning.
Okay.
And, um, should, should, you want to see people volunteer their time and get involved?
Right. And I just want to give a, a telephone number, you know, they call my office, 973-733-5870, um, to volunteer, um, to help. We have a number of, um, great initiatives, things that we know that would, they would be interested in. And so if they are interested in volunteering, um, to help make a difference, um, then please call my office.
Oh, absolutely. And, um, uh, what we're going to do is I'm going to take this, uh, this, uh, we're taping live right now. I'm going to put it up on YouTube.
Great.
And if anybody says anything, I think we should ask them, you know, uh, "Well, how many, how many hours have you volunteered this month for your community?"
Right.
Um, and you can certainly sit and watch, you know, you can, there's a lot of other things that you can do, but how many hours did you volunteer to your city councilman, Mr. Sharif, um, to make your, to make Newark a better place?
Exactly right.
Um, so listen, you have an open invitation. Come back anytime you want.
That's super. This was fantastic. And I thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to just share, you know, some thoughts and, and my vision, you know, about what I'm trying to do in the ward and my approach. And so, um, so I look forward to coming back whenever you extend the invitation.
Well, you, you challenged me to volunteer and so I did. I volunteered my whole show and you can, uh...
Yes, you did.
And I'm going to volunteer 15 to 20 minutes every week for the Jersey Report.
That is great.
So, um, uh, next week, we're going to be hearing from, uh, Eric Martindale and then I have some, uh, tape of, uh, Brian Stack. So anytime you need 15 to 20 minutes, um, to get the word out or you have an initiative, please call me.
That is super. I would definitely take you up on that.
And I will, uh, volunteer my time to, uh, I'll even come and bring a camera to Newark. I'd love to videotape you, uh...
I would love for you to come to the learning community and spend them an hour or so and walk through the classes, videotape. That would be wonderful.
I, I would be thrilled to see you, uh, teaching Introduction to Computer.
That would be great. Uh, you can sit down, I'll teach you how to create a spreadsheet and a pie chart or three-dimensional bar graph. That'd be great.
I actually know how to do that, but I want to see you teach Introduction to Computer.
Okay.
But I will bring my camera, so...
Now, that is great. Now, you have an open invitation, honestly.
Thank you very much.
Great.
You have a wonderful weekend, sir.
So you be well, have a terrific weekend.
All righty.
Okay. Take care now.
Bye-bye.